I'd like to call the Board of Alderman hearing for April 18, 2022. There's quite a few people here tonight who want to ask the overall, please make sure their showrooms are on sound. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Veland.
Aye.
Alderman Cows.
Aye.
Administrator Staubner.
Aye.
Attorney Bob.
Aye.
Alderman Prosser.
Aye.
Alderman Saitz.
Aye.
For everybody, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united in all, with liberty and justice for all. The first item we have on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have the council report, April 1st, 2022 through April 15th, 2022. The Board of Alderman meeting minutes for April 4th, 2022. The Board of Alderman executive session minutes for April 4th, 2022. And the March 2022 collector's report. I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as read. Second, roll call, please.
Alderman Veland.
Aye.
Alderman Prosser.
Aye.
Alderman Cows.
Aye.
Alderman Saitz.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is ordinances and resolutions. First, we have Bill Number 2022-13, an ordinance amending section 16-3 of the Code of Ordinances to amend the age of minors subject to curfew. Administrator Staubner?
Yes, this is a, this is an ordinance amending our section. The state of Missouri raised the age of emancipation, basically, last year. It used to be under seventeen, now it's under eighteen or seventeen and over. And so, we're just mirroring their requirements.
I'd like to introduce Bill Number 2022-13 for first and second reading by title only.
Bill Number 2022-13, an order amending Chapter 16, section 16-3 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of St. Clair, Missouri to amend the age of minors subject to curfew. Second reading, Bill Number 2022-13, an ordinance amending Chapter 16, section 16-3 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of St. Clair, Missouri to amend the age of minors subject to curfew.
I move to approve Bill Number 2022-13 as read. Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Prosser.
Aye.
Alderman Veland.
Aye.
Alderman Cows.
Aye.
Alderman Saitz.
Motion carries. Bill Number 2022-13 becomes ordinance number 2063. Next item on the agenda is Bill Number 2022-14, an ordinance amending section 6-26 and section 6-83, the Code of Ordinances to bring ordinances in line with county fees. Administrator Staubner?
One of the things that our new building inspector pointed out was that we had some inconsistencies with the fees we were charging and with the ordinances. The ordinances did not match up. And also, in my ordinance, 6-83, it didn't match up with 6-26. So, these are just, basically, corrections to the ordinances to match the fees that we are currently charging in our building department for permits.
Does anyone have any questions about that ordinance?
I'd like to introduce Bill Number 2022-14 for first and second reading by title only.
Bill Number 2022-14, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of St. Clair to change the building permit fees within the city of St. Clair. Second reading of Bill Number 2022-14, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of St. Clair to change the building permit fees within the city of St. Clair.
I move to approve Bill Number 2022-14 as read. Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Veland.
Aye.
Alderman Cows.
Aye.
Alderman Saitz.
Aye.
Alderman Prosser.
Aye.
Motion carries. Bill Number 2022-14 becomes ordinance number 2064. Next item on the agenda is Bill Number 2022-15, an ordinance approving the minor subdivision of Stone ledge addition and accepting the final plat as presented. Administrator Staubner?
Yes, this was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is, as it is a minor subdivision, they're taking one lot and they're splitting it into two. This is going to also be connected to a larger lot with numerous villas to our homes later on. And you'll see that when I go to the preliminary plat later in the session. But this was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission and recommended for approval to the Board of Alderman.
Are there any questions about this ordinance?
This bill is combining both the minor subdivision and the approval of the.
Correct, because, yeah, minor subdivision, that is the final plat. Yes.
I'd like to introduce Bill Number 2021-15 for first and second reading by title only. Yes.
Bill Number 2022-15, an ordinance approving the minor subdivision of Stone ledge addition, a re-subdivision of tracks 1 and 2 of part of the northeast quarters of the southwest quarter and part of the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter of section 25, Township 42 North, range 1 west of the 5th PM in the City of St. Clair, Franklin County, Missouri. Second reading of Bill Number 2022-15, an ordinance approving the minor subdivision of Stone ledge addition, a re-subdivision of tracks 1 and 2 of part of the northeast quarter of the southwest quarter and part of the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter of section 25, Township 42 North, range 1 west of the 15th in the City of St. Clair, Franklin County, Missouri.
Move to approve Bill Number 2022-15 as read. Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Saitz.
Aye.
Alderman Cows.
Aye.
Alderman Prosser.
Aye.
Alderman Saitz.
Motion carries. Bill Number 2022-15 becomes ordinance number 2065. Next item on the agenda is Bill Number 2022-16, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a three-year agreement with Showtime Power Techniques for 2022, 2023, and 2024 freedom of fast fireworks display. Administrator Staubner?
Well, this is something we've discussed in the last couple of board meetings, and we decided that we wanted to go with a three-year agreement, and we sent out an RFP. Showtime Power Techniques was by far, I mean, by far, the best deal. I think they had almost 300 more shots than the next two companies. So, they were definitely, they were the ones that we used last year and other ones and things like that. So, we have the contract down, and it's ready to go.
Does anyone have any questions about this ordinance?
I'd like to introduce Bill Number 2022-16 for first and second reading by title only.
Bill Number 2022-16, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the Corporation of St. Clair, Missouri to enter into a agreement with Showtime Power Techniques LLC for 2022, 2023, and 2024 freedom of fast fireworks display. Second reading, Bill Number 2022-16, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the Corporation of St. Clair, Missouri to enter into a agreement with Showtime Power Techniques LLC for 2022, 2023, and 2024 freedom of fast fireworks display.
I move to approve Bill Number 2022-16 as read. Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Aye.
Alderman Cows.
Aye.
Alderman Prosser.
Aye.
Alderman Cows.
Aye.
Motion carries. Bill Number 2022-16 becomes ordinance number 2066. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business, job vacancy updates.
We currently, or have been in recent, three job vacancies for part-time personnel. The first one is parks, and we're still looking for a suitable candidate. We've interviewed one, actually, we've interviewed two. But we haven't found somebody that's suitable at this time, so we're still looking. So, if you know anybody that's probably wanting or parks, part-time seasonal employment with the city, well, I mean, it's my friend, Tom. At the admin department, we are hiring someone to do seasonal or part-time work in the absence of an administrative assistant that is going on on the primary day. We have interviewed a number of people, actually, I think we interviewed one. But we have.
Oh, for that one.
There were so many interviews this week, I just, I just kind of get models together. So, but we did interview Connie Marlowe, and she was a very good candidate, and so, I'm looking forward to having her as the part-time assistant. And then, the last one is the building assistant. We did three interviews for that one. I did count that one. We did three interviews for the building assistant, and we were very impressed with Acacia Bunch as our new candidate for the building assistant. So, I would like to present that person also for how he is the part-time building assistant. So, we'd like to.
I make a motion that we hire Connie Marlowe as the part-time temporary administrative assistant and Acacia Bunch as the part-time building assistant. Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Veland.
I'm gonna stand.
Alderman Prosser.
Aye.
Alderman Cows.
Aye.
Alderman Saitz.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, but we're still on unfinished business with the parks. Are we going to have to bump that a little bit in order to get someone in?
At this time, we're not considering that. Right now, we've got a couple of options. We have gotten, I think, one or two other applications that we haven't had a chance to look at or interview. And if that doesn't work out, there is the option of going with the temporary service that we can also get with them. And so, if, I guess, if we can't find someone in the next week or so, we'll probably go with the temp service and try and get them to give us a suitable candidate.
Next item on unfinished business, there's spring cleanup. Last week, you should have gotten it, and if you didn't, let us know. And we have spring cleanup, Wednesday, April 27th, Thursday, April 28th, and Saturday, April 30th, from 8:00 AM to 3:30 PM at the city maintenance shed. No cleanup on Friday. Otherwise, we'll switch out our dumpsters. Next on the agenda is verification of erection results. The St. Clair City Chief of Police, vote for one, total votes is 235. With micro work is 228, and a write-in of seven. St. Clair Alderman Ward won, total votes 112. Charlene Sailing with 107, a write-in of five. St. Clair Alderman Ward, two, total votes 146. Amanda Saxons, 78. Kim Marler with 68 and zero write-ins.
This is the first I've ever. Maybe I'm motion.
Somebody always accepts them, but I think the reality is, they've already been certified to by the clerk, but we've already done it by motion, just accepting them as a formality. So, I think it would be appropriate to do that if someone would be so inclined.
I'll make a motion to accept the erection results as read. Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Saitz.
Aye.
Alderman Prosser.
Aye.
Alderman Cows.
Aye.
Alderman Veland.
Motion carries.
Let's find out the motion to recess.
You're just gonna, yeah, to adjourn the meeting for momentarily, or just recess it, and, not to adjourn it, just recess it, have some people move chairs, I think it's a little.
We're gonna take a short recess to swear in Alderman and Chief of Police.
I have to go with paper, I use it in the heat after news. I have to say, I have to swear, I possess, I possess obligations, I subscribe my laws, and I. To Constitution. United States. The Constitution, the Constitution of the states, the states, the states, the states, the states, the states, and 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 the states, So are there any questions regarding this preliminary plat?
The memorandum that Mr. Ivy put in our packet of planning zoning such, uh, didn't suggest, it said that the builder would connect our water line with his, which was 400 and something, V, correct? Something like that?
Yes.
Is he, is the developer good for paying for that connection?
They'll need to be.
Yeah, no, that's on them to extend to cities.
Yep.
And they're aware of these scenarios?
We haven't, I, I don't know that we've forwarded that to them, but they do know that they have to follow our guidelines, and our guidelines are follow, are, the approval of this preliminary plat is based on this assessment.
I think they were looking at a, they were looking at a couple of different scenarios. So one of them was, um, there's a four-inch water line that the developer, that Cochran was looking at connecting to a crossover in Minter Street and then tying in that way. So they would have had to put an eight-inch line in there anyway, and that was like a 500 or 550-foot run to extend that. So this is the same, basically the same distance, just at a different location. So I think they are expecting to ask to extend some getting water to the development.
My question would be, do you feel like in any way this compromises our service to the other residents and businesses in that area?
No, I don't think so. That, so Archer did a water study for us back in 2015, and they modeled the entire city in a KYP modeling program that tells them all the pressures and flows. That's where they added this into. So the, the fire flows are 5505 gallons a minute, the pressures are between 61 and 77 PSI in that development. So there should be plenty of flow and pressure in there. And then as we expand the system in the future, it'll only get better. Travis, when he modeled it, you know, there's a couple things that we extend down to the eight-inch line on Plaza Drive, and then we do some replacement of line over on Redbud that goes below, uh, to over 2,000 gallons, and the fire flow in that development.
Are there any other questions? Can we get a motion to approve?
We need to approve Scenario Two, is what this county is recommending.
Yes.
As long as the developer agrees.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation and approve this preliminary plat for Villas at Stone Ledge with Scenario Two water setup.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have the Greater St. Clair Homes request for a waiver of tenant occupancy inspection fees. Administrator Stilberg?
Um, Greater St. Clair, actually Donna Rubart was, uh, brought this up to our attention, and this is a nonprofit organization that, that basically spends all of their money providing services and, and everything for these, these residents. Their residents are, the residences are, they're, um, for these, they are all seniors, correct? Seniors or disabled, okay? And, and they're at a reduced rent rate and everything, and so they, they, they help them with that. They maintain these buildings in an immaculate condition, um, and, and all this costs money. And what they're asking us to do is to waive our occupancy inspection fees for this nonprofit organization that provides these services to seniors and disabled, and I think it's a, it's, it's a worthy thing to do.
I definitely agree. I think that since, um, they are specifically a nonprofit, and they are also subject to the USDA and the HUD inspections, it's not like there's no oversight there. That, that, those inspections are probably more stringent than our tenant occupancy inspections. So I have to agree.
Is there any chance that any ownership or anything might change at some point?
I don't foresee that.
Okay.
The reason why I ask is, could we do this on a yearly basis?
Could you please approach the podium?
Yeah, thank you.
And state name and address, please.
Yes.
Amy Shup, Ten Dogwood Drive. I was the site manager, and now I'm the bookkeeper, and we just, um, had to get with USDA. I can't remember the exact name of the paperwork, but we cannot sell it for sure for two years. We have a commitment, I don't remember the title of it, but we have a commitment that's for at least two more years before our loan through USDA and the Federal Home Loan Bank comes due. So we are entitled, are committed for at least two years.
I have a question. Does the board still do onsite inspections annually? So there's actually more oversight than in most, I, I remember doing that. So that's another oversight that's handled.
The board inspects at least once a year. We actually had an inspection a couple months ago, and there'll be another one in September. We main, the, the tenant rent is $336 a month, and that includes their water, electric, and sewer. So you can kind of imagine, we are on a very tight budget. That's my job to work on the budget. And so I did look back in the past five years. It's only amounted to about $330 on average, but for us, that's, you know, half of the cost to replace the refrigerator, or, you know, so...
Thank you. May I have a...
Personal response, could we do it for two years then?
Or, or could we, would it be possible to maybe do it for the entire time that that, the current organization owns the, owns the property?
Yes.
Would that, would that work?
Yes.
And if ownership changes, then, then we would revisit it?
Yes.
So I'll make a motion that we waive the tenant occupancy inspection fees for this nonprofit, um, organization, at Greater St. Clair Homes until such time as it changes hands.
May I have a roll call, please?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Good deal.